I call this meeting to order. Effingham County Planning Board Meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer and we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'd like to ask that everyone who can, please stand with us for both. Ask Mr. Alan Zipper if he'll say the prayer.
Gracious heavenly Father, be with us tonight as we discern the business of Effingham County and its residents. Help us make good decisions that will be good for the county and good for the residents. Watch over all our servicemen and women and all our first responders that keep us safe and all our elected leaders. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is a republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Zipper. Our agenda, is there anything we need to add or delete from this agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, item number three has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Anything else? Call for a motion to approve this agenda with the noted change.
I'll make a motion to approve with the noted change.
Motion for approval, is there a second? Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Minutes from February twenty-second. Do I hear any corrections or additions? If I do not, I'll call for a motion to approve these minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion for approval and a second for Mr. Thompson, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. All items presented tonight will be presented again at the Board of Commissioners meeting. That meeting is also a public hearing. Do we have a date on that meeting?
April fourth.
April fourth, that meeting will be April the fourth. It's also at six o'clock. And items which are approved as well as denied will move forward to the commissioners. We'd like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak tonight, when the item of your concern is called, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would state your name as well as sign your name for the record. Item number one is a public hearing for Jeffrey Fordham and Jeffrey Fordham as agent for Louis and Otto Diedrich. Request to rezone three point nine acres from AR one to AR two to allow for a recombination of adjacent parcels located on Seventh Avenue. This is the first district. Ms. Dunning, do you have a report on this?
I do. This is simply what the applicant is requesting to do is to move a property line to extend Lot B so that encapsulates this existing metal structure. Because neither of the lots nor the combined total is five acres, it does not meet the requirements for AR one, so they're asking to rezone to AR two.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Good evening. Good evening. Do you have anything to add to that?
No, just asking a request because we're hoping to build our home site on that location in Meldrum. And I was told that it was necessary to do so.
Any questions, comments from the board at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, I hear a second. Second, Mrs. Zipper, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all.
Thank you.
Item two is a public hearing for Dale A. Jackson as agent for Earl Wayne Tomlinson. Request to rezone five point eight acres from AR one to AR two to allow for the creation of a home site located at four sixteen Lehigh Circle. This is the third district. Ms. Dunning?
Yes, the applicant wishes to create a home site here on this one point three two acres, which will cause both proposed lots to be under the five acres required for AR one. Staff is recommending approval. This is in Lehigh Acres, which is a subdivision. However, there are some AR two and a few non-conforming AR one lots there as well. We recently, we recently rezoned this parcel right here for similar reasons to create a home site.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, do you have anything to add to that?
Really getting older and putting the build site in for my daughter or husband. No, there isn't any build site in my farm, there isn't any left.
Could I, can I get you to state your name for the record, please, sir?
Alan Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Questions, comments from the board at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Thompson seconds, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Item four is a public hearing for Joseph R. Davis as agent for Shirley Y. Davis requesting to rezone six point four of fifty point seven two acres to allow for a recombination of adjacent lots located on Stillwell Cloud Road, and this is the third district. Ms. Dunning?
This recombination is for estate planning purposes. I think the simplest way I know how to show you is basically, this is what we have now. We have one large AR one parcel and a smaller R one parcel. The outcome they're looking for is to have three parcels, two which will be AR two due to their size, the bulk of which will remain AR one.
Alright, is there any questions to that? Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? I call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
A motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number five is a public hearing for Wesley Newrath requests a variance from the requirement that an AR two zoned property must be at least five acres to accommodate an accessory structure located on Nelly Road, and this is zoned AR two. Ms. Dunning?
So the applicant came in and applied for a building permit to put a shop using the one sixty-one Nelly Road address, which is actually this parcel here. At the time, we informed Mr. Newrath that it could not be placed here because it is not accessory to a primary structure, nor does it meet the required five acres for an AR zoned lot to have an accessory structure without a house previously. He does have some options, there is space at one sixty-one Nelly Road. There's also some wetlands on the lot he's proposing to put the shop on. It's not clear because the site plan's not to scale whether that would impact it or not. If this request is approved, one of the conditions is that the applicant provides a wetlands delineation with measurements from the marked wetlands to the accessory structure.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Howdy.
Good evening.
It's not on the wetlands where I'm putting this, right, right in front of my house. Only the wetlands is to the left of my house. Obeying there.
Let me ask you to state your name.
Wesley Newrath.
Thank you, sir. So your, is your home on the adjacent parcel?
The two acres.
Okay. Questions from the board?
So if the lots were combined, he would be able to do this? That was a question, not a statement.
No, if he goes to combine them, it would still be less than five acres.
But he could combine them and rezone it?
It, no, because it would be less than five acres still.
And you don't get an accessory use at all with that, less than five acres? Not just that it can't be before?
It, it can't be forward of the home or without a home unless you have at least five acres in AR zoning.
So where, where is the home? Where is your?
One sixty-one, right at the back on the two acres of land, it's under mortgage, so I couldn't combine it anyway. And I got two and a half in the middle, then I gave my son, remember last year, three acres to put his house on. Right by Nelly Road, mine's right there at two and a half. It's gonna be right in front of about a hundred, a hundred yards, not, not even that much from my house.
Any additional comments at this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Board, have any more discussion?
Question, do you, it's out of the wetlands, because it looks like on this sketch.
Yes, it is, it's on high Blanton land.
With, we would require delineations, a delineation because of the federal wetland, the national wetland inventory layer showing proximity of wetlands. We need to know exactly where they end in relationship to the structure.
But if, if it was approved, he'd have to get a wetland survey done.
Yes.
And if he was out of the wetlands, then he could build his shop.
Yes, if he's approved for the variance gets, and gets a site plan that, from a certified wetland specialist, yes, absolutely.
Does this go to the commissioners?
Yes.
I guess my question, who, the application that's in our, in our file, the part that's written in blue is about why it meets the criteria, I guess the criteria of the variance application. It says specifically on there, due to the wetlands and parcel size, only accessory structure able to fit on the property. Is that, did, did you put that on the application, was that part of your application?
They, they helped me fill it out whenever I applied for it. But it's, it's right by the wetlands, it's not in the wetlands, because I'd actually cleared the land and, and consulted with my guy that's gonna do my slab, and we put some dirt in there before that to build it up a little bit. But it's not, it's not in the wetlands. Wetlands is right to the left of, if you look down my driveway toward Nelly Road. I think I'd have better sense not to try to put a building on wetlands. We do have a thing, it's not gonna set the tank going in there and nothing, it's just a building. And we do have a thing where Brad Shaw did when the perk for the three acres to put the, the house on last year, and it's high Blanton land, Blanton, High Blanton, at this particular part. Right there in the middle is that Seagate.
Have we had this come before, like, this is, this, this variance, I'm just curious from a standpoint of, I don't remember this. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to wrap my head around it a little bit, to be honest.
We, we've had, we've had a variance for someone putting an accessory structure in front of their house, but even then it was an existing slab, so this is, this is a new request.
Alright, any further discussion? I'll call for a motion.
We did, and we did ask if there's other?
Yes.
I'm struggling with it a little bit, but part of him says because he's out in the country, I hate to see. I don't think there'll ever be another structure, and that's the problem, there'll never be a house, if there was a house on it, he could put a structure on it, but it's not a house on it.
But it's, I mean, it's.
And there's no way to combine the two parcels.
I mean, it's his land and he wants to put a shop on it, and as long as he doesn't do it in a wetland, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, that, that's, to be honest, why I was asking about the past process aspect of it, if there had been similar, that I just wasn't involved with.
What about all these builders being put up, they being put on wetlands, ain't they?
Not supposed to be.
From what I've seen, they clearing the swamp.
But if, if they are, they are going through the process, and I think that's what staff is asking.
Right, so if y'all.
Just to have, and it may be that there aren't, and I think what that would be is a no wet letter from a consultant that could say that. It's not necessarily saying you've gotta go map something, but if, if there's a consultant that would just say, no, the, the NWIs are wrong, that is, that is a process.
I know they ain't clearing land up for nothing.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to approve, if we could.
Make it.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve with staff recommendations with the wetland delineation.
Have a motion for approval, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second, all is in favor of approval?
Nah.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. And you'll still have to come to the county commissioner.
Right, yeah, yeah. So that's my next move is a commission meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Newrath. Item six is a public hearing for TK Electric LLC requesting to rezone six point two acres from AR one to B three to allow for commercial development located at seven six three US Highway eighty, this is the first district, and the very next one is the sketch plan, so I'm sure we'll see the sketch plan now, but it will be a separate motion. Ms. Concanon?
Oh, I don't know, I don't have them.
Are you handling the rezoning?
Yes, I am, we were just, Katie's gonna handle the graphics. So this is a rezoning to B three to accommodate two large storage buildings on Dogwood Way, on the Dogwood Way side of the parcel. It's divided, as you can see, by wetlands, and the applicant does not wish to fill those wetlands, so access to both Dogwood Way and Highway eighty is, is preferred. The Highway eighty side is posed as a restaurant site, there's no detail on that, but that is the proposal for commercial slash retail on the front, on the Highway eighty side of it. So it's a B three we felt was the best zoning, given the surrounding zoning, given the relatively low intensity use, because these buildings are designed, are going to be used by an electrical contractor for, at the Medisite, for the Hyundai plant, and they say that they will use it solely for their own supplies. The initial deliveries may be large trucks, but after that, it really will be just the, the, the smaller delivery trucks to and from the plant. So we felt that the impact on Dogwood would be relatively light, it's not a large-scale warehouse operation. That was, that, that was our understanding, and that's why we're, we're comfortable with the B three rezoning designation. Katie has a slide showing the zoning in the area, you'll see that there's a smattering of, of B, all the blue, the blues across Highway eighty are, are, are B two, I think? Is that two or three? B three zone, oh yeah, B three zoning for Edwards Commercial Court. There's a B one on the corner that is a daycare facility. Obviously, all the driveways will be separate, there, there shouldn't be any conflict. Traffic study is listed as a requirement, and, and moving forward with site development planning, our review engineers will determine exactly what it is we'll be looking for in any traffic impact, traffic impact assessment. The site also is in the flood zone, and so a cloma or a cloma application to FEMA will be required if applicable, if fill is needed to build up the site above the base flood elevation. Wetlands impacts, if any, and we're told that there won't be any, but if any, that would be, need to be permitted by the, or US Army Corps of Engineers. And then the state controls Highway eighty, so G dot would provide any encroachment permit that would be necessary. The county does have jurisdiction over Dogwood Way, so any, the proposed driver would have to meet, excuse me, our access management and encroachment regulations. So this will all be reviewed as usual, under our, our, our usual guidelines. So for the rezoning, staff are recommending approval, and then moving forward to the sketch plan, we met with the applicant, we had our usual pre-application meeting. We've discussed the potential phasing of the, of the development site. We understand that the, the storage buildings on the Dogwood Way side are the first phase, and that the, the restaurant portion on Highwood eighty would come after that, and then that would all depend on market conditions. The site will be served by private well and a septic system, and that is basically it. As, as we go through this process with your recommendation, and then the Board of Commissioners, if any conditions are added or removed, or if any new discussions come up, we would include all of that information in a notice to proceed that would go to the applicant's engineer who's here tonight to speak on behalf of the project.
Can anyone argue against that, or is that well past that area?
Ma'am?
And his rezoning of that area, is that already official?
No, ma'am, that's what we're doing, that's what we're talking about.
I don't want that to happen.
Okay, well, we, well, we'll, you're gonna get your turn.
Hey, my first one, so.
No, no problem. Everybody will get a turn. Mr., yes, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm J.C. Hellme, I'm with EMC Engineering, I'm here, represent TK Electric with this project. Ms. Teresa pretty much summed up everything we talked about in the pre-app meeting. Went through the pre-app meeting, went through their concerns. They said it's gonna be on septic and water utility management, I have a will serve letter from them. They have a line running down Dogwood, and they also have a line running down US eighty for that, so. And, and Ms. Teresa, what she said with the phasing, they want to get the shop done as fast as they can. The only reason for the phasing is just to keep G dot, their process might be longer than the county, so wanna keep it. They could happen at the same time if the, if the permitting goes at the same time, but if G dot's taking longer and the county approves Phase One, which would be the warehouse, they're wanting to get in, in as quick as they can, because they already have material coming over, and as soon as they get it in. And what she said about the initial delivery, might be a big truck, we put turnarounds, you know, so they can get in and out, but I've been told by the client that the deliveries from their own will be like UPS tile trucks. And the only thing this is gonna be is like for storage, they're gonna be working at the mega site, doing electrical work. It's just somewhere like a base for their workers to come, get their materials and go. It's not gonna be like a warehouse operation where there's constant in and out.
Alright, thank you, sir. Questions at this time?
Well, I, I think I got a few. The B three aspect, can we go back to the map just to see the, the adjacent zonings again? Saw on Dogwood, is that other three oh two, one oh two, is that a, this blue, is that, trying to see the, no, is that R one? Trying to see, is there any other commercial, commercial pieces that put up against Dogwood? Just trying to understand.
I believe there is a commercial, I believe that is. That is a B three or a B one.
That one right there.
That one right there. Which is a reason why staff felt like it was, because there's already connectivity on to Dogwood.
Is it, is it access both?
Mm-hmm.
So what, what's, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
And I guess my follow-up would be, the, the uses that are the, the, the ones that are off Dogwood, they, they wouldn't be able to fall underneath a less intense commercial zoning, one of the B one or B two? I guess the reason I'm thinking is, is what else could there be in B three? Because we're not conditionally limiting it to the site plan, right, for the zoning, so I just wanted to understand what, what that might mean.
That, that's why we really wanted to keep it in the Bs, this might have easily been considered an industrial, that would have been a real safe zoning, but in this area, as you see, there's, there's no red on the map, so we didn't want to, or, we didn't want to introduce zoning, industrial zoning right in the middle there. B three, we felt that the two storage buildings, given the intended use, could fit comfortably into B three, but that was, that we didn't think we could get away with B two. B two neighborhood commercial, it, it just didn't seem like it was going to work out. I know we looked at the different designations at the time at our pre-app meeting, and B three seemed to be the, the closest. If you look, and, and this is a more of a close in, I'm looking at, I don't know if Katie can pull it up, but on the zoning layer, so across the, across Highway eighty, obviously, Edwards Commercial Court is, is all B three, and a little bit further down south, so there's the blue at the bottom there. If you were to zoom out and go a little further south, there's actually a B three parcel closer to the intersection of Dogwood Way and eighty, like to the southeast, next, and then that's actually next to an R three, so I don't, I'm not sure what's there. So this is an area that's, you know, mainly mostly in the ARs, but, you know, there's quite intensive uses in, in the general area, and there's, you know, even north of it, there's, north of Dogwood, there's on Santill Road, there's B three zoned properties around that entire intersection. They're not developed on the north side, but there are, there are, there are a good selection of B three properties along the way. So we felt that that would fit in, whereas industrial really would be, it would just be too intensive and could attract uses that definitely wouldn't fit in the Dogwood Way side. And the reason they are requiring access to Dogwood Ways is in order to protect the wetlands on the site and not to fill the wetlands on the site. We did ask about an internal road, because that, that would be much more palatable, but that would come at the cost of fill. that would come at the cost of filling in the wetlands in the center, so it's, it's kind of a balance.
Anything else right now? So, so what's going on the Highway 80 frontage?
They told me a restaurant.
So is there not enough land up there for them to, I mean, usable land for them to get?
Right, the, the shops that they wanted, 80 by 150 would not fit because of the wetland, the way it cuts in, because of the right-of-way buffers and everything, 'cause we do have the 30-foot buffers from the AR adjacent zoning. The shops would not fit on that parcel.
So what kind of buffers do you have?
They're 30-foot, they'll, we'll probably leave them undisturbed, 'cause we don't plan on any grading in that area. Everything's out of the buffer, so...
So it's pretty wooded down the property lines?
Um, it is on the 80 side. I believe there's a big field on the Dogwood Way side, but the perimeter property, I think, is wooded.
I know we're not talking about the site plan, could we go back to the, that, what we were just looking at, there was a site plan? So I see that your building, looks like it's set back 30 feet, but there's another dash line that's definitely not the same distance back as the 30 feet on the perimeter.
On the roadway side?
Yes.
I looked at the buffers and they said adjacent to the roadway is 10 feet off the front.
If, if you get the zoning.
Correct.
Right, right.
Now, the Dogwood Way side, I could, if they wanted 30-foot on that side, I could bump back, 'cause I have room.
Yeah, I would think protecting that roadway would be as important as adjacent properties.
All right, Mr. Hellme, we may have some questions for you in a moment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this?
My name is Joseph Caldwell and I live at 382 Dogwood, and I want the Commissioner Board to consider not rezoning this, for this business, because we live in a residential neighborhood, it's quiet. Dogwood Way is all restricted to just car, local traffic, not truck traffic. It's got a sign at both ends restricting truck traffic through there. And would you wanna look at a business out of your front, front of your house? Look at that all day long? Asking you guys if you'd like to look at a business from your home. And like he said, they're gonna build up the elevation, to build the property up, to build the buildings, and how's that gonna affect flooding for the rest of us, 'cause it's all flat in that area? And another concern is how's this gonna affect our property values? Is that gonna increase, increase our taxes in a residential neighborhood? I'd much consider that. And the traffic, that's gonna, that street's just for residents, it's not built for truck traffic, heavy truck traffic, so that's gonna tear that street up if the heavy trucks start coming in there. So we'd like for you to consider rejecting this rezoning.
All right, sir, thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Hi, my name is Cindy Caldwell, I live on 382 Dogwood Way, which is right in front of me. I mean, I know she's probably not seen, y'all probably not seen, how this little area looks. This is a small little area that's got a bunch of, I know we're double wides or whatever, but it's our homes. We haven't been there for two years, we just moved down here. And the truck traffic that's going down there, police have to stop them and stuff, I mean, that's just not right for a business. I know they're wanting to do a business and a restaurant in the front, they don't worry about the people, they need to build over. There's some land over in front of Octane. Why aren't they going that big old wide area that's got no trees? And it is a flood zone over in our area, we have flooding sometimes, but we don't want truck traffic going down, and he says it'd be just the UPS, you know, that's a lot. It's gonna build, and it's gonna build, and it's gonna build. And you need to worry about us as common folk that live on there, that has a deal with it, because if y'all were there, guarantee you wouldn't want it, 'cause you could see it. If y'all would go down that road and look at it, it's maybe a mile long, and I mean, it's just, it's just residential. Lot of double wides, we do have a little place that has a, what do you call it? I can't think of what the word is now, but down, they've built nice little homes in there. And that traffic is just gonna be, it's already awful as it is, little cars go past there when they shouldn't be. Police is always getting them. But we need to not have this built, this is crazy. I mean, I know I'm just a little person, but you know, this is our home, we pay our taxes, we're planting flowers and all to look at, and all we gonna look is, is a big old warehouse standing, a bunch of UPS trucks, we got little dogs that's out there, children that are going to school, getting off the school bus? That's not a good sign. I mean, that really isn't. We beg y'all, do not approve this.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
He's just signing his lane like we were supposed to have done. Sorry about that. He's doing right.
He's just excited.
Yeah.
Good evening, boys. My name is Willie Wright and I'm speaking on the behalf of Eden Missionary Baptist Church, which is located at 435 Dogwood Way in Eden, Georgia. And the property of Eden Missionary Baptist Church is located approximately about 300 or 350 feet from the corner lot of TK Electric. And we are concerned at Eden Missionary Baptist Church about the additional commercial traffic that is gonna put on Dogwood Way, which is located right in the center of a residential area, just like the lady that spoke before me. There's children playing in the area constantly because it's in the middle of a residential area. Now, if this zoning is approved and this goes through, the main interest to TK Electric is gonna be off of Dogwood Way, and so the commercial traffic is not gonna have, but no other choice but to enter from that direction. And another thing, also, I've lived in the Eden area all of my life, and I've looked at the plans that TK Electric is presenting to y'all, where it shows that they have two holding ponds. Those two holding ponds is no, is no match for the O'Geeche River, when the O'Geeche River decides to flood. So those holding ponds are not gonna really do anything for, when the river floods out. And also, we also like to bring to your, bring to your, your attention, you know, that, and res, and due respect to the church that's in that area and the residents that are in that, that area, we disapprove of this, we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Please forgive me, this is my first meeting, so really over enthusiastic, so I apologize. I live on Diaz Court, 214 Diaz Court, and I saw the plan.
Can I get your name?
Alisa Tripp.
Thank you.
And I was actually very surprised that they wanted to do this, because what they failed to tell you is that commercial building is right next to a daycare center. So you're gonna put a warehouse with heavy equipment, heavy trucks, on, next to children? And I'm not sure I like that. My kids are grown, thank God, and any grandparent will understand that, but I still like those kids, they're very nice, and I like that. And I bought my house in 2006, it took me 20 minutes to get to the port, I work for the ports. And because of all the commercialism and all the buildings that they put, it now takes me 35 minutes to get to work, and it takes me almost an hour to get back home. Do we want that for our children? It was so nice and quiet there, hardly any trucks, and now you wanna put more? And if you allow them on Dogwood Road, Dogwood Way, I apologize, you're gonna have to resurface that road every year. It is not rated for the heavy trucks, even in the beginning, that are gonna start. And if you ask me, you let a commercial in there, you let them get a foot in there, they're gonna take 20 miles. I don't want my home to be a commercial zone. I don't wanna hear forklifts and the screeching of trucks because a truck pulled out in front of a school bus, 'cause he was tired of waiting. So if you excuse me, I am very passionate about this. I want our children to go to school just as safe as they can come home. So please, please don't do this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Tripp.
Good afternoon, I'm Mary Hamilton, and she just told, gave me the leeway to come up. I'm the owner of the daycare center there at Highway 80 in Dogwood. We've been there almost 24 years, and I, I've been blessed to have parents to come back and tell me how much they appreciated the service that we rendered to their children. And even the children come back as, like a place, a safe place to have been, you know, been a part of, and that, that makes me feel really, really good. And the thought of having this industrial business coming in right next door, 'cause that's, actually only separating us is that, the wetlands and the trees. And that was one of my main concern in that, if they come in, what are they gonna do? Whatever they do, it's gonna push water on our area and all the residents in the area. And just like Mr. Wright just declared about the O'Geeche, yeah, I know, and he's so right. Eden is my home, and yes, I've seen the area flooded. When the Maye O'Geeche overflows, there's nothing that's gonna contain it, it's gonna flood out the whole area. And the other thing is the children, the parents go to work with the peace of mind that their children are in a safe place, and that's what we wanna continue to offer, in that when they are, some of them come in so early, early mornings, so when nap time, wanna make sure those children get their naps. And then when they're on the playground, that they're out there enjoying the fresh air and not dust with trucks coming in and out. So we've been offering that kind of service for 24 years and I would love to continue to do that, to give parents peace of mind when they go to work that their children are in a safe, loving environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Howdy, my name is Glennis Loper, and my wife Angela, we're right across the street from where y'all bringing this in. And we've been there 23 years. And like this lady said, Mr. Thomas, all this church, there's a lot of kids on that street, on Dogwood. There's a, there's a, in the first subdivision, my niece lives there, she's got a boy. My nephew lives in the other subdivision, he's got three children. We've been in there, my youngest grew up and graduated from Effingham County High, you know, I see this coming in here. It's just, that's a lot, you know, especially when you got that many kids around there. There's a bus stop right there, right by Mr. Thomas's house, bus stop down at the first subdivision, right there at the back, where they're talking about. I mean, let me tell you, that's, that's a lot to be bringing in there, you know, on that one little road. That one little road's been, you know, I've been there since 2002, and I'm gonna tell you, it's, I mean, you got, you got, like the lady said, you know, we got families, we've been, we, we don't, you know, we ain't want to, you know, we don't want to thrive nobody and no work, but we don't wanna sit there and look at no building. We don't wanna sit here and, you know, we have to deal with the wetlands. I know, I dealt with them, 20 years of dealing with them. I've been at where I couldn't get out of my door of my house, so I know. I own one of the biggest pieces of property there, I own 7.81 acres, and it's crazy. You know, you start bounding up them wetlands, it'll tell, it'll tell you real quick, and they'll come see you too. I know, I know they will. But you know, my thing is the kids, you know, you got a lot of kids, this lady with her daycare, you know, and talking about wrecks. I got one right there for you. I was hit right there in front of the dollar store four years ago, still ain't been to court for you, but I've been in a wreck right there. We having more wrecks over there now, more people, we seeing more accidents, and they ain't getting no help over there. The poor policemen, they catching it over there back and forth, trying to run from side to side. I know. So, I mean, you know, my thing is the younger ones, my, my grandkids, my nephews, my, my kids, my grandkids, I mean, Mr. Thomas has got them, you know, his grandkids, his people, and the, that church's business, I know, they go every Sunday. So, I mean, that's, and I wouldn't like to see, you know, I wanna see some help for it, you know, if you can do it, and I, I just, I just think, I like that lady said, I don't wanna see a building, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Loper. Yes, sir. I'm gonna let these... Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Good evening.
I'm Don Corrigan, this is my wife Cam and her sister Karen. We live right at 787, right on Highway 80. First of all, Highway 80 is a death trap. We have crashes in front of our house all the time, sirens screaming up and down there. And the property right across the street, they fought it years, what was it, 10 years ago?
Yeah, it was about 10 years ago for Edwards.
And they promised they wouldn't do all the things they've already done, now, now they've torn all the trees down, and it's getting louder every day, and we got forklifts beeping and backing all the, you know, we can hear it in the house. And I'm also worried about what's it gonna do to our well? We have well water. But, go ahead and say what you're gonna say. They've been there since the 70s, they built that, her dad built the, two houses sitting next to each other.
We are on 787, which is adjacent to the property that we're talking about.
They're gonna put a gigantic warehouse right an inch from the last tree on our, on our property.
When I went over and thought I was meeting neighbors coming to our neighborhood, I was met with a gentleman that spoke broken English and introduced myself and thought that they were moving into the house, that they were working on inside, and he told me, no, we're a business, we'll be putting in warehouses, one in the front, one in the back, we're gonna open to Dogwood. And I said, well, I don't mean to be rude, but you see right here on this property line, that's my bedroom, and that's my sister's bedroom, and we're only feet apart, there's a few trees and azalea bushes. And he said, oh, and I said, yeah, oh, how much noise are you gonna make? And he goes, oh, we're a little bit noisy. And I said, well, sir, you know, I do have a problem with that, I don't know how you got this property, but someone was deceiving you. This is a residential area, and we parted ways. I have nothing against anyone coming and making a living and moving to Effingham. My father and I fought Edwards Industrial Park being across from our property for years, and they were finally approved, and it is a disaster over there. We have a dust bowl in front of our house, the traffic on Highway 80, they don't do the weigh stations, they come over on 80 and avoid them. So my dad told them, you might as well put a restaurant in on the weigh station, you'd make more money than you do on the trucks coming through there. And it was a joke, but it was really serious as well. I came wanting to ask if this continues, we need some kind of sound barrier. Our house is so close to this property that I can't imagine sleeping and taking care of my sister. of my sister.
She's already a nervous wreck anyway.
Yeah, we already, from Edwards across the street, we hear the forklifts and, excuse me, the trucks, twenty-four hours a day sometimes. The beeps, our house is very well made, but it is noisy. And we can hear it. We have to run fans at night to sleep. I'm just very concerned.
What makes anybody think it's okay to build this kinda thing in a residential area? You know, I mean.
Yeah, I feel like when they bought this property, someone let them think that this was gonna be okay. And I don't know who would've done that, but I'm here to ask you, please, as a taxpaying resident, along with all of my neighbors, we are asking you to please not let this happen. I feel like that there are plenty of places that are vacant for businesses to go and not into this property. And as being a neighbor of this new business, I don't wanna start off on the wrong foot, but I'm asking you to please not let this continue. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Were you finished?
I think so.
Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Lennon. I live on four fourteen Dogwood Way, Dogwood Road intersection in front of my house. I've been there since nineteen fifty-three. This year be seventy years. My concern is the safety. Anytime something happened on Highway eighty in Sand Hill, the traffic comes through Dogwood Way and Dogwood Road. In the morning time, from seven to nine, even, even if there's not an accident, the traffic off Sand Hill comes through Dogwood Way. So we already got abundance of traffic already. And the road is not built for heavy equipment. Dump trucks are using the roads right now. Not a whole lot of transfer trucks, but dump trucks. So my concern is safety. If we get more traffic in that area, there'll be more accidents. Now, I think there's a total of four school buses come in the morning time and four in the afternoon. And like they said, as children, safety. And the drainage has always been drainage problem. When we had that road paved, Mr. Bucky Salwitz was the commissioner, thank God for him, we got that road paved, new sewer pipes and everything. But it's still an issue with drainage because we can't keep the sewer pipes clean now. So safety. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Lennon. Could I just ask by a show of hands if you're here and you object to this rezoning? Can I get you to raise your hand? All right. So is there anyone else? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak? And of course, I'll ask that, you know, we try to bring any new information.
I'm Kimberly Gay. I own the property one eighty-two Dogwood Road that is actually connected to this proposal, and I object to it just for the same reasons that everyone else has. The traffic, the noise. I work from home. I hear it all day long, like they said, across the street. So, I mean, it is just so noisy. So that is the major concern in having the extra traffic. Because when I go out, there's always, like he said, there's dump trucks coming down that road. And, you know, we just don't need the extra traffic and noise.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Allen, and I actually live at two oh six James Court, which is actually almost where Sand Hill and eighty intersect. I'm in that little subdivision. I've only lived in, I've only lived in Georgia probably about five years. And when we decided to choose our forever home three years ago, I looked, and I said, Effingham is where I wanna be. I heard about South Effingham. I said, I want my child to go to that school. That's the district I wanna be in. So we made our choice based on our daughter. And in seeing all of this, I'm gonna present it to you a little bit different way because I'm a little bit different person. I went on your website, and I pulled up your Effingham County twenty twenty, twenty forty Joint Comprehensive Plan. And according to you, for future land use, your guiding principles are, the county and city should strive for consistent development types and characteristics within similar land use areas, this is a residential area. The county and city should require appropriate transitions between different land use areas such that there is a step up or a step down between these different uses. This would not be a step up, step down. This is like a needle in the middle of a haystack. I mean, it's definitely not gonna fit in. The county and city should discourage the establishment of intense or heavy industrial or commercial land uses near existing residential areas. The county and city should not allow more intense development in areas not served by public water and/or sewer. Non-sewered areas should be limited to less intensive land uses. I myself, in our small subdivision, we have a community well. I know that many of the other people in this area, they all have wells. I don't know what this electric company produces, but I'm worried about contaminating my water. I'm worried about my child getting sick in the next few years because we don't know what they're gonna put in our water that we have to consume. It's not treated. They come out, they test it, but they don't treat it. In addition, I want to give you again from the Effingham County twenty twenty, twenty forty Joint Comprehensive Plan, the definition of what Effingham County considers residential. The predominant use of land within the residential category is for single-family and multifamily dwelling units organized into general categories of net densities. This land is protected from encroachment of industrial or other uses capable of adversely affecting the residential character. We are people who live here. We have a church because that's part of our community. We have a daycare, so someone will take care of the children in our community. Because I myself, when I worked, liked to have my daycare closer to my home than to my work. In addition, when you look at the existing land use map for Effingham County and the future land use map for Effingham County, neither one show any kind of commercial development on our side of eighty. On the other side, yes, there are warehouses. Yes, that is zoned business, but that's on the other side of a delineating US highway of US eighty. Truly, all we are asking for this small community is that you just use your own guiding principles for future land use when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Is there anyone that has any additional information, new information?
I thought you were saying from here.
No, sir, I'm sorry, you gotta speak into microphone. These meetings are being taped.
I know it's been mentioned, but I forgot to mention that our property, the front half is on Highway eighty, but the back half is on Dogwood. That's wetlands, and so is the place where they're planning to put that big warehouse, which was our neighbor Brian, he sold it to them. But at first, we heard it was gonna be electric, but then I heard it was gonna be a warehouse for the Mitsubishi place. So I don't even know what that entails. Who knows what kinda drivers they're gonna be bringing in there from who knows where that don't know what it's like around here? So just a lot more danger than we need. Anyway, thank you.
Is there any?
You're not allowed to build on wetlands, right?
No, sir.
Because I'm from the south quarter where they have all those wetlands.
Well, I mean, that's, that is one rule that they're, they're not allowed to do.
Hi. I'm Angela Loper. I live at three thirty Dogwood Way, which is exactly behind it. My main thing is I'm concerned about the wetlands. We have water just because of the weekend rain, yeah, last week, last weekend's rain. I mean, we still have standing water right now. Mosquitoes are ungodly from out there. And I'm concerned with the growth and the disturbs of the wetlands to make it worse for us to not receive it. I mean, we're paying taxes on our seven point eight one acres of Effingham County's taxes. Most of them are wetlands that we have. And basically, we're paying taxes on something that we can't do nothing with. But I'm just concerned that, you know, I mean, we've actually had to drive through water, I mean, up above my tires on my little Honda, just to get through out of my driveway. And then, of course, when you try to get out onto eighty or to Sand Hill Road, the traffic with the eighteen-wheelers and whatever we have currently now, you can't get out. And if you do, you have to pull out in front of someone, and, you know, the trucks are going through there a hundred mile an hour. And I'm just concerned about the safety and, of course, our wetlands. And actually, as I've looked on it, and I've mentioned this before, that the actual wetlands that I brought to Effingham County before, that the, the wetlands plat that I presented from the Corps of Engineers shows that Effingham County's maps are incorrect. Even our property lines on the, the maps are incorrect. So that would be something that someone needs to look into.
They will verify all, all that.
Well, and that's why I wanna make sure, because I don't want them to sit there and look at this thing and say, okay, well, the wetlands, that's not affecting, well, it is.
It'll, all the wetlands will have to be verified by the US Army Corps of Engineers.
Right.
And signed off.
But they're actually not done that when they're taxed, we're, we're being taxed for it with having all the wetlands on our property. But they wasn't verified because I had to present the map from Corps of Engineers to Effingham because Effingham didn't have them. So just, I've just thrown that out there.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Loper.
Thank you.
Is there any additional information to be presented on this item?
Can I just say one quick thing? Like I say, I'm Cindy Caldwell. Up here on the Dogwood Way, it's hard for y'all to visualize, y'all don't live there. But mine is the three oh two G four. And the three oh two G five is where there's four children that go to school. If y'all would take enough time, I know y'all are busy, but come out to where, to come out to where we live so you can see what these, this corporation is trying to do. I mean, if you don't live there, huh, it's not, it's not, I ain't worried, that's not in my backyard or front yard. But if y'all would take the time and come out there before y'all make a decision, y'all will understand what y'all are looking at and what's all around it. It's just homes, double wides, children, church. So, I mean, there is a big old daycare. I mean, just take the time, at least go down and take a look, and you'll see. Because I know y'all not probably been there. You've probably been down Sand Hill and on eighty, but you probably not come through that one little one point two mile long little street that's not even a two lane.
I've been down there.
You've been, so then you know.
I, I do it very often, actually.
So, well, thank you. I mean, y'all know what it looks like. I know people wanna make money and start, but let them go somewhere else. I mean.
We're familiar with the area and the project.
All right, thank you.
Is there any additional information at this time? All right, I'm gonna close public comment, um, discussion board.
My only concern is just entering off of Dogwood Way. If it's coming off of eighty, I don't think it'd be an issue, but.
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion about the wetland. I actually think a wetland impact, allowing it all to come off of Highway eighty would be a, a better, a better plan. That's not what we're talking about, really. We're talking about the zoning of the entire property, and that's what I was concerned with, my initial question about the R three as well, because that is the most intense commercial. I know it's not industrial, excuse me, B three, excuse me, B three. And just the transition of, even if this is the use now, it could be something different in the future as well, right?
Yes.
So.
And, and that is one of my concerns, biggest concerns, is, you know, what does the future hold? You know, because this, this opens the door.
So I do, I do know the area. I drive it. They're right, there's, the road's signed. I mean, it's not for large truck, truck, through traffic. I will say that the frontage of all Highway eighty, in my opinion, long-term will convert over to less than typical residential. But in particular, this, since it's all one parcel, they're asking for the zoning, I'll make a motion to deny the zoning request.
I have a motion to deny. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Zipper. All is in favor of denial. Any opposed? I just wanna be clear, this board, we're, we're appointed, this is, this is a recommendation to the county commissioner. The county commissioners will make the final decision. This decision is by no means binding in any way. You know, we, we have vetted this item. We, we've heard a lot of concerns and thoughts and ask questions, and that's the information that'll be relayed onto the county commissioners. But it's also a public hearing, you know, for everyone that wishes to attend on April the fourth and, uh.
Is it the same building?
Same place, six grounds, same room, same everything. Different, just a different group of people.
Different us.
Yeah. Item seven is a sketch plan for TK Electric LLC, request approval of a sketch for TK Electric LLC located seven six three US Highway eighty, on AR one, proposed zone in B three, first district. Is there any additional information on this? Anyone?
There's no additional information.
Wish to speak either in favor or against? This is a sketch plan, it's not a public hearing. Mr. Hillme, do you have anything you'd like to present on this sketch?
Just some previous comments that, I mean, they will be operating during normal business hours. It's not a twenty-four hour, from what I've been told. Also, wetlands, resource land consultants, as the wetlands shown on the sketch plan, we've had them go out, flag wetlands. They're the ones we use to submit to the Corps. Usually their wetlands are pretty right on, the Corps agrees with them. So the wetlands shown are what's there. We will not impact them, we will not slow water up, we will not hold water. We are not allowed to release any more water off the site than is already releasing. We are not allowed to fill in the floodplain without mitigation. All that stuff is during design, highly regulated, highly looked at. And from what I've been told, it's just gonna be a hub. There's not gonna be a bunch of activity there during the day. They might be unloading, move some stuff, loading trucks up. But from what I've been told by the client, it's gonna be just, they're gonna go there, get their material, go to the plant, come back, drop it off, go home.
And I know you can understand the fear of future, you know, with this, with, once this zoning is granted, so.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there any further discussion? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
A motion for denial, is there a second? Second, Mrs. Zipper, all is in favor of denial? Any opposed, motion carried by all. All right. That's it for tonight. That's it for here, for this, for this board. Height of aid is a public hearing for Three Birds Development LLC, request to rezone thirty-nine point four six acres from AR one to R three to allow for a multifamily residential development. This is the first district. Ms. Donegan, are you handling this rezoning?
Yes, ma'am.
The applicant had submitted a similar rezoning request back in the autumn, just prior to the moratorium on multifamily. It was withdrawn as B, excuse me.
All right, Ms. Donegan.
The request to rezone to R three has been resubmitted. And and the revised R three requirements have been adhered to. It is a lower density, different layout than what you've seen before. It is proposed about two hundred and thirteen unit townhome development. Community features such as picnic shelters, playground, dog park, and walking trails. There is a twenty-foot buffer around the development. And the front one point two acres is proposed for a community site. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm Matt Bird with Three Birds Development. Thank you for having me. This, as was said, this, this started off about a year ago. So we've, we've done a lot of work on this, this particular development. And about a year ago, there was a moratorium. Probably less than a year ago, there was a moratorium put on this type of development. So we pulled the application, the original application, out of about three hundred fifty-five units. I wanted, the reason I did that is bec- I could have easily been grandfathered in, could have easily, you know, gone through the process at that point. But I wanted to pull the application and work with the county. And I wanted to work with the citizens of the county. And I wanted to work with staff to get something that was palpable to this area. So after about six months of, of a lot of work with staff, we came up with this, with this rendition right here. I believe this is the last one. Can you pull that back up, the last? I believe that is the last. There's actually one more, I think, we've submitted since then. Anyway, the, what we've done, we've, we've, we've created a lot of, a lot of buffer area. We've done, we've done everything that is in the, that is in the zoning of R three, that, that, uh, that the county has rewritten R three ordinances. We've done, we've gone way beyond what the ordinance has said, okay? We've also put in front here as a buffer, I believe it's one point two acres. I'm gonna donate that to the county. The county can do that one point two acres as they wish. They can put it in a park. They can put in a, a substation for, for fire, for EMS, for officer, police, you know, whatever, whatever they want to do for that, with, with that area. So we met with staff, and I believe, you know, we have staff approval on this. If there's any questions from the planning board here tonight, I'm here to answer them or any other concerns and questions from anybody else here. Thank you.
And I know we're not, well, I've got something to crack. We're not reviewing the sketch plan technically tonight.
This is, yeah, this is just for zoning.
It's been submitted.
This is submitted just to see the work that's on. This is not an overnight thing. That's, that's been, you know, that was yesterday. It's been on for about a year now, so.
Right. And I, I just, well, my comment's still gonna be related to what was submitted to review there. I like the aspect that there's two entrance points. Just when that sketch plan comes, if it comes, I guess I should say, make sure what we're shown can be done. I would be a little concerned that that one access point's so close to adjacent properties that DOT may not allow them to be that close. And if we review something based off of that.
We, we measured that, and so far, they're saying it could, it could be done. So that was one of our concerns, too, is it be done.
Any further at this time? Any discussion from the board?
It is, just, just, we, our density of this, just so you know, it's, it went down over forty percent. So this is all there, there, too.
What is the current density the site plan showing?
It's, it's less than, uh, it's less than four units per acre. So you're, now you're talking about an R six. You've gone from R, it's, it's, it's like four point something an acre. Way less, way less than what the requirement. I think it's, we're allowed to go up to about nine an acre on this. So it's almost half
Right.
Of an R three. So we've, we've, we've cut it quite a bit here.
And I guess that's where I was starting with that first question. We still have to keep in our mind, though, we're considering rezoning that could allow, the site plan could change, right?
The site, the site plan, the site plan that I'm showing you right now is not gonna change. Sketch plan. As long as it's approved, it's not gonna change. You're not, you're not gonna see me come back with three hundred units here. I've, it's, that's, that's not what I'm gonna do. And I think I've proven that in the past, working with y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Bird.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor or against this request?
Hello?
Good evening.
My name is Annette Maddox, M-A-D-D-O-X. My husband built Greenbridge Farm Subdivision. This property will, that Mr. Bird wants to build, will completely border our property. And everyone is against this. I'm a little bit concerned about the entrance points. I really, I guess, I need more information about the DOT when they wouldn't allow it previously. I, we do not understand what's suddenly changed, other than going down in the units since last October. I can tell you, I have a home office twenty feet away is where they want to build. Twenty feet. That hasn't changed. That's not, that's not going to, that's just not acceptable for me. And Mr. Bird said he worked with the citizens. We actually called his office, didn't get a return phone call. No one worked with us. We are all dead set against this being built. Twenty feet around your property. All the residents are against it. The infrastructure, the water, the sewer, the traffic wasn't adequate three months ago. I'm just a little concerned, just by going down in the units, how all of a sudden now it is acceptable. If these units are modeled after what he built off of Benton Boulevard, they certainly are not acceptable. All you have to do is drive through there. We do not want it. Every one of us are opposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maddox. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
I'd like to say one more thing.
Very quickly.
I'm not sure how many R, R threes or R sixes are adjacent to this property. But I think there's probably at least two or three R six developments that are near there, at least one R three, high school. And, um, yeah, that's all I'll say at this time. Thank you.
Is there anything further from the public? Close public comment. Discussion from the board.
I, I mean, I think it's a use that's common, needed in parts of the county. And, you know, I, I do think with, again, we don't, we're not reviewing the site plan, but or remember the site plan when it comes forward, if it does come forward. If there's any other discussion from anybody else, but.
I mean, that's my opinion as well. I mean, it's a approved ordinance, you know. He meets every rule stipulation, whether, I agree with them all, but they were just rewritten by our Board of Commissioners and approved by Board of Commissioners. And so I believe this rezoning checks all the boxes that have been put forth in front of this board to check, is, is my personal opinion.
I don't want subdivisions over there.
I don't, I mean, you know, this is
I know what their commissioner wants.
This, well, this is, you know, in my, in my opinion, this is, it's not arbitrary. It's, um, says it meet the rules and requirements laid out by Effingham County ordinance.
What about our check sheet?
Well, you can, I mean, you have to check your check sheet, and I'm checking mine, so. Anyway, is there any further discussion?
I noted it, it does check those boxes. I prefer to see townhomes closer to a heavily populated area like a city. But I do know that it's approved, and he did check all the boxes. And I know that they're coming whether I like them or not, so.
Agreed. All right, we ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Allen. All those in favor? Any opposed? A motion carried. It's three to one. This moves forward to the county commissioners, whatever, as a recommendation as well. Item nine is a public hearing for Christian Hale. Request a conditional use for a rural business to allow for an automotive shop located at eleven seventy-three Highway twenty-one North. And this is the third district. Good evening, sir.
Hi, how are y'all doing tonight?
How are you?
Good evening.
So the, the applicant is here tonight requesting a conditional use for a rural business and also a variance in conjunction with that request, which I'll get to in a moment. This is sort of a unique situation. This lot was approved for, to be split and rezoned, half of it commercial. And the conditions of the rezoning were never met. A plat was not submitted. And therefore, it reverted back to its original agricultural residential zoning. In the meantime, though, it continued to exist as an active auto body mechanic shop from the late nineties up until Mr. Hale purchased it under the understanding that it was both an automotive shop and a residence, which it was not. A complaint was made to code enforcement due to some accumulation of cars. And Mr. Hale applied for a business license. Since the scope of his business does not meet the conditions for home occupation, here we are. So Mr. Hale would like to continue to operate a small-scale automotive shop. He would be working out of the existing shop on his property and maintaining his residence on the property, which is why he cannot attempt to rezone to B three, which would be required for sufficient commercial, because he does reside there as well. Mr. Hale has offered voluntarily some conditions to improve the property because it is adjacent to residential properties, including putting in a privacy fence along the shop and filling in the vegetation on Old Tusculum Road. Staff is recommending approval. The variance, which is the next item, is because this property is not the three-acre minimum typically required for a rural business. Staff is also recommending approval for that variance.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Christian Hale. I'm the current resident there and property owner. We had, uh, went to house to house after we heard that one of our neighbors were inconvenienced by our, what we were doing. And we had went and we got all of them to sign that they do not mind us operating and continue operating. We have those signatures here. I've also explained to them that we will not be having more than six vehicles in the yard at one time. We are twenty-four seven, but that's just primarily for like roadside, stuff like that, not shop work. Like, that's outbound, all outbound work. Other than that, we, you know, keep an operation between normal business hours. Besides like, you know, like me hauling a vehicle there and dropping it off or something. Other than that, I mean, there wouldn't be no actual wrenches turned or anything like that beyond, you know, your normal nine to five business hours. With that being said, and the approval from our neighbors that are adjacent to our property, we were hoping if you could probably approve this. If there's anything, questions, anything like that, please, I mean.
All right, thank you, sir.
I also have pictures of it, if you'd like.
And you've agreed to put up a privacy fence?
Yes, sir. If, I mean, if that's
On the one side.
Yes, on the one side, on the, where the shop is literally pretty much right there. But unfortunately, when I bought it, it was like that. It wasn't like, you know. And that adjacent property was also, no houses were there. There was no houses. It was like a field, so. I had no idea it was in the predicament it was in.
When they purchased it, it was already there.
Yes.
When they purchased these new houses, that building was right where it was at.
Yes.
Right, yeah. It's been there a long time.
Yeah, a long, long time.
Since the fifties, I've heard.
The fifties.
Discussion from the board this time? Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? I mean, you know, because I've been around here a long time, you know, old, I didn't even realize it was called Old Tusculum Road.
To my knowledge, it was supposed to be, my address is eleven seventy-three Georgia Highway twenty-one North. And if I don't give you that address, you will not find that location.
That, well, that used to be Highway twenty-one, I mean.
Yeah, that's old twenty-one spur.
Well, actually, the original house that was there burnt down, and the fire department that was right behind them got lost, and it took them twenty minutes to get there.
Because of this same incident we have in right here.
So, to my point is
At the end of your driveway now, aren't you?
Exactly.
You know, this used to be a shop on a, on a state route. And obviously, as, as progress happens, things change. How, how big a business are you running?
Right now, we're, we're a small business. We're not anything upscale. I have one service truck.
Multiple mechanics?
No, I'm, I'm the only owner and worker at it this time. I did not want to put anything into this until I've talked to you guys. Now, the biggest I would get is probably two at the shop. That's the biggest we would ever get. And then the rest would all be outbound. I mean, like, they would jump in a service truck, and then they would go to the vehicle to fix it, wherever it is, on the side of the road, wherever. And it would be strictly auto at the shop, by the way. We do do diesel, but that's just roadside service. That's it. They don't come to the shop. We do not repair vehicles that were diesel at the shop. We do not do any of that.
This is a question for staff, probably. The rural business, does that run with him, run with the property?
It is, it is specifically for him on that property. It's like any other conditional use. If it's non-transferable, he can't take it with him. It can't stay with the property if he sells it.
And if, what he's describing changes, and they don't do that, is there repercussions that could happen? If, like, if there are complaints that are more than just this one, and just try to make sure, like, understand that, right? I always want to clarify, because I get confused myself with which ones go with the property and which ones go with the owner, so.
Yes, sir. Actually, the, uh, the one complaint we did have, I have talked to them, and actually, we've worked things out, and I've actually fixed their vehicle and stuff for free, to help, you know, we've, we've, we've made, we've talked and conversed. Before then, there was no communication, communication. And if they have a problem with anything, they send me a text and I change it. It's that simple. Because I'd like to operate, you know what I mean?
What the bylaws say about bribing?
Hey, man, I'm all about the community, you know what I mean?
All right. Is there any further discussion or comments? Nothing further from anyone else who wishes to speak? All right, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Motion for approval and a motion to second. All those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item ten is a public hearing.
The next one.
You're, you're next as well. Item ten is a public hearing for Christian Hale. Request a variance from the requirement that a rural business property be a minimum of three acres located eleven seventy-three minute, eleven seventy-three Highway twenty-one North, third district. Ms. Katie?
A rural business requires a minimum of three acres. This particular property is only an acre. Staff is recommending approval since it has been existing and operational in this configuration for quite some time. Yes.
Anything further?
I don't think so.
All right. Same comments.
Yes, sir.
It was there when we bought it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I need a variance for my actual home, too.
And the variance is also for the fence, because when, because there's a pool there, the insurance made us put a fence around it. But we had to run the fence outside of the shop, so it isn't within those guidelines, because we had no room there to do so. And if we put a privacy fence up, it's going to be right on the property line, yeah.
Most of them are.
Yeah, well, just, I think there's a setback on it, it's not.
Yeah, we were, we were told there was supposed to be some kind of like a foot off the property line or something like that, that's really why we're here, man.
Is anyone else wish to speak? Discussion from the board? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approvals, there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Smith, all those in favor?
Nah.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you. Item eleven is a sketch plan for Angela Sauls, requests approval of a sketch plan for JMS Storage Facility located at thirteen fifty-five Fort Howard Roads on B three, fifth district, uh, Ms. Concanon.
Yes, this property is currently zoned B three and the front that's shown kind of in that blue purple color, um, is currently operating as business. The rear portion is what we're talking about tonight, so the owner wishes to use that kind of unused space for boat and RV storage, uh, yeah, RV boats, RVs, boats and campers. And they will use their existing shared access that's on Fort Howard Road, you can see it there, um, it's kind of, if you go back. There's, if you're familiar with that area, you'll know that there is an existing shared driveway between the Dollar General and this, the, the business at the front. So the proposal is to just continue to use that as the main access for customers to store their, um, RVs, boats and campers in the back. Now, this does back on to Grace Lane, there is not a proposal to make an access for customers to use Grace Lane to access it. However, there is a power easement, and so there will have to be access for maintenance on that easement. But it is not meant to be for the customers who are renting space there, so that's, that's, there's, there's no uh, proposal to use Grace Lane to access the property except for power line easement, maintenance. Uh, chain link fence will be, uh, is proposed to, uh, circle the property. The county ordinances require a thirty-foot vegetative buffer to be added. There's currently really not one, there's, you have a slide with photos, maybe we can see that. There's currently not, um, a lot of vegetation in the, I mean, there's some vegetation, but that will have to be landscaped. Um, additional landscaping will have to be added to meet the ordinance requirements. So this property is already zoned B three and what we're talking about tonight is a sketch plan, and we do have the sketch plan. Um, and if we could go back to this one, this is, no. There, so, uh, this, this is the, the actual portion of the parcel that we're talking about tonight. So you see that it'll be, uh, I think, I'm looking at the engineer here, Alec, it's gravel rather than paving, I think. Uh, Alec, the engineer can answer more questions, but basically, this is, uh, a very relatively low impact surface parking for campers, RVs and boats, and staff are recommending approval of the sketch plan.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Teresa. Yes, sir.
I'm Alec Metzger with EMC Engineering, um, representing JMS Electrical Contracting. Uh, she covered it pretty well. This is a three point two acre site, they already have a electrical business on the site, so this is just some leftover property on the back. Um, it's about one point eight acres and half of that is under the power line, so, uh, not, not really useful for anything other than this. Uh, so that's just what we're proposing, to fence it in, allow, uh, boat and RV storage. All of it will be accessed off of, uh, Fort Howard Road, um, no chassis, no containers, none of that stuff. That usually gets people all excited. Um, so we'll be like asphalt millings instead of, uh, paving. Um, and then really the buffers out there, you know, there's only one property on the, on the bottom side of the page where the thirty-foot buffer, where we're showing that to be planted. Really, that's the only thing that actually could be buffered. Uh, the site to the north is the leftover piece for Dollar General behind their site, so, you know, it's not ever going to be anything developed, and we're restricting access on the Grace Lane, so we don't, uh, interrupt the residents that live on that road. Be glad to answer any questions.
Discussion from the board this time?
No, I see the plan's got a label that says for Georgia Power Maintenance and, or Georgia, for maintenance of Georgia Power, right, for those gates.
Yeah, so she's already met with Georgia Power and talked, told to them about the approval process and, you know, that's really all they care about is, you know, nothing is stacked up, nothing is put real tall in there, no trees are planted underneath it, and then they have access to get up and down their power line, so.
My point is more about the access point and not being anything but a maintenance access.
That's right.
And, and the chain link fence goes all the way around the entire?
Uh, yes, around the storage area. So there'll be a, you can see the drive that comes in, there'll be some sort of automatic gate or, um, controlled entry point there.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
And this is a sketch plan, not a public here.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you're, you're correct. Um, since I did ask, yes, sir, if you have a question, come forward. Since it's, I mean, since this property's already been, you can come to the podium, since this property's al- already been rezoned, I mean, this is just a new drawing of what they're doing with it. But, um, a lot of times we do allow public comment, so.
So what you're saying is, no matter what I have to say, this is going to go forth?
It's already, it's an allowed use in an, in an existing, um, rezon, where it's already been rezoned.
Okay, some of the comments that he made answered some of the questions I have. I live at one ninety-three, my wife and, my wife Jenna and I live at one ninety-three. With our two daughters there, we're concerned about, uh, a storage facility going there for a couple of reasons. Um, first off, if it's twenty-four hour access to customers, um, that's a concern of ours. It's literally, um, from that wall to that wall from my back door. Now, I did hear the results of the buffer zone, which I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Um, when JMS built the electric company there, um, John, the owner, um, assured me that there would be a privacy fence built there. It never was built. So, when we come out our back door, we're looking at all their containers and stuff like that. Um, which is pretty hard to deal with. Uh, also, you know, we, we have just reached a point, uh, my wife and I, to where we had made the decision to move forward with the restoration of our home. Which is upper of anywhere from fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars we were going to put into the, um, landscape and the, uh, interior of the home. Um, and this greatly is causing us to maybe reconsider, uh, if even staying there. We had lots of dreams, the whole reason we moved to this place is because they blocked off Grace Land and, and it, you know, it became a great place to raise kids. Uh, I'm glad to know that they're not going to use Grace Lane as an access point, that does help, I will say that. Um, I would request that, uh, they would consider building the privacy fence there if, if this is going to go forward. And there's nothing really we can do about it, that they would build a privacy fence there, at least on that side. Um, and I, I do appreciate the fact that they're going to, uh, put shrubbery and landscape up there, that helps. But, um, I, my, then my number one concern is if it's going to be twenty-four hour access to their customers. Because, um, you know, right now, uh, which I've never talked to, uh, the electric company about it. Right now, on the backside of their business, there is a extremely bright light that, um, shines on our property that's kind of invasive and invading our space. And I, I just wanted to talk to them about it, but unfortunately, John, as you know, just not long ago passed away, and I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. But, um, I wanted to talk to the sons, the owners, about this and ask if they would please consider building the privacy fence. Thank you for that.
I think that sounds like a, a fair, um, request, and obviously, all lighting has to be pointed.
Yeah, I think we can maybe add just a clarification that we would expect that lighting, if it, if it is lit, that it's lit away from the residential. And there's what's called full cutoff, where you shouldn't see the light source, it would just be shining down and lighting up what's below it, so you don't see the exposed, um, light source. That's, in my opinion, a perfectly fair request.
I, I agree. Thank you, and, and we appreciate your, thank you. Um, any further discussion? Ms. Teresa, do you have anything you wish to add to that?
Uh, no, this will, uh, if approved, uh, this, the sketch plan will be followed by, um, s- um, site development plan review. And we will definitely take note of the lighting, um, we'll, we'll acquire a lighting plan most likely. And, uh, keep track of the fencing and buffer, the implementation of the buffer.
You wish to add something?
Um, yeah, so we did discuss the lighting at the pre-application meeting, so we will have a, you know, a lighting plan that addresses the concerns. Um, so it will, you know, be directed down, not to pollute, have light pollution going off of the property and shining in somebody else's window. Um, you know, this, this will be open twenty-four hours, but it's a very low use. Um, I know I go by the one on, by Ebenezer, I go by it twice a day, I've never even seen anybody there. So, uh, you know, when we've looked at trip generation and stuff like that, you're talking like one or two a day maybe, at the most. Uh, so it's a very low, a low use. Um, as far as, uh, you know, fencing and existing stuff that's going on, you know, I would recommend they get with, uh, uh, Ms. Angela, the owner, and work, work those details out of, on the stuff that's existing out there. Um, you know, not, not to place stipulations and stuff on this.
But on this property, huh?
Yes, yes, and then we were-
Portion of the property.
We, we weren't going to add anything to the, to the existing. Alright. Do you wish to, alright, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, but I would like to be specific about the lighting, that the lighting plan is required. And that it would be, um, directed away from the adjacent residential. And then very specific standards for the, the buffer and the privacy fence along this portion, not the existing portion.
Um, motion to approve with some stipulations everyone understand, any discussion? Call, call for a second.
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, Mr. Metzger. Items twelve and thirteen are both for the Carson Company. Um, Carson, item twelve, public hearing, the Carson Company. Unlimited LLC as agent for Cynthia Roberts ETL, requests to rezon twenty-six point six eight acres from AR one to R three to allow for a multi-family residential development located on Old Augusta Road and Carone Drive. This is the fifth district. Um, Ms. Concanon.
Yes, so this parcel is currently zoned AR one, the proposal is to rezon it to R three, which is the county's multi-family, uh, residential zoning district. The proposal is for townhomes, and in our R three zoning district, we allow a density of up to nine units per acre. That's not, you know, necess, that's not usually achievable or hasn't been without extremely high density, in fact, maybe even, you know, multi-story. So in this case, it's, uh, uh, we're talking about the rezoning first, but the, the proposal is, um, a multi-family development with a hundred and forty-three units, uh, which is about five, slightly over five units per acre density. Uh, at least, based on that acreage, fifteen percent is required to be common outdoor open space, which would mean four acres. And then the concept plan and actually the sketch plan for the second application does show that at least four acres is set aside for common outdoor open space. The, let's see, there's a proposed twenty-foot buffer around the perimeter, a twenty-foot vegetative buffer around the perimeter. And actually, if you look at the Old Augusta roadside where there's kind of that emerald green, that's showing that there's, in fact, a, a larger setback, a thirty-five foot setback from the road. So that will be required to be vegetative, and that will help to screen and, and create more of a secluded appearance to the entrance of the development. Uh, let's see, there are some adjacent R three zoned parcels, they have not been developed for multi-family. So as you see that magenta color there, they're, they appear to be just regular single family, but they are, you know, currently zoned R three. So this is not a particularly outstanding or unusual zoning for that area. And in fact, if we were to zoom out, you'd see that there's fairly heavy industrial, um, activity and commercial activity further south and to the east, and, and north and to the east as well. Uh, let's see, the parcels are in the Rincon Water and Sewer Service Delivery Area, so we did talk, uh, work with Ms. Hurst on, uh, to ensure that Rincon had the option of first refusal, they've declined to provide service, it's not in their immediate plan of action. And so Ms. Hurst then has worked with Coastal Water and Sewage, and they have indicated that they have, uh, permitted capacity to provide water and sewer services. And as we go forward, if this is approved, the, during our site development plan review process, we will require additional information on that. I mean, we can't give final approval on any development permits until we're certain that all utilities are available and can be provided to future residents. Uh, let's see, so, uh, that's basically it, a single entrance to Old Augusta Road is proposed. And that is really all that's possible unless additional parcels were to have been acquired and that, you know, really wasn't part of the plan. In fact, from our first meeting with Ms. Hurst to now, an additional parcel has been added, so that she's been able to, uh, rework the design a little bit. And that, and as you see, there are stub outs now, there's no intention or proposal or requirement that this development link to adjacent properties, but again, as part of our requirements and our discussion during the pre-application meetings, meeting, um, we talked about linking to adjacent parcels, and they're currently developed, we're not in any way indicating that, that this is a requirement to, to link. But I, 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 it looks like the, um, design engineer took that and, and actually created these, these stub out appearances on the, on the bottom part, on the south part, and on the west, northwest corner there, and all that really is, is just access to the townhomes. They're not going to be streets that lead into adjacent parcels, that's very unlikely at this time. Uh, but they are there in case that were ever to be a possibility. So if you go, uh, Katie, to the, maybe, there's another slide that shows more, that one right there, you know, there are amenities proposed, there's walking trail, there's a couple of ponds. There's some green area, there's the buffer, as I indicated before. The idea is that this not intrude into the existing residential area, but, you know, acknowledge the fact that there is quite a bit of commercial and industrial activity and a good, great need for housing in the area. Staff is recommending approval of the rezoning.
Thank you, Ms. Teresa. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Alice Hurst, I'm with the Carson Company, and I've met with the county for several months going over this project and feel that there is a need in this community. Um, we do have the new suwan plant that's coming down Old Augusta. Um, we have, to the left of this property, there are duplexes, to the right, there is a RV park there. Um, I feel like this is a great project for the area.
Alright, thank you, ma'am. Any discussion at this time?
This is, this is one we will be next reviewing, uh, submitted plan, correct? The next item will be the plan.
So you can talk about the sketch plan, yes.
Um, I'm just curious, on the, um, the site plan, we have, they're labeled twenty-foot buffers, but there's several spots that don't show any green vegetation, and that's just me getting, uh, a little curious as to what that is and if there was a reason.
Yeah, I don't know, um, I noticed that earlier when he resented, um, why he didn't put that on Kerry.
Yeah, I, I guess we can, we can get into that when we get into the, the plan the next time through. We'll, we'll, we'll address that in the next, I don't know, I guess.
Alright, thank you. We may have some questions for you in a moment, Ms. Hurst.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Good evening, just a second, let me write my name, please. Okay, good evening. My name is Charlotte Exley Johnson, I'm a property owner at nine 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 Chimney Road. Um, and our property does adjacent this, it's, I was born and raised and lived in- It's, I was born and raised and lived in Rincon all my entire life. My family roots go back to the Salzbergers who was here in seventeen thirty-seven. And I would like to start by saying that I am proud of our county commissioners and also our zoning, zoning board for the time that they have taken and for, and, uh, it is not an easy time for this, but you've met the challenge and moved forward, and I want to thank y'all for that. And I know it's a thankless job sometimes. But I've received, um, a notice for a zoning board for an application of request for rezoning twenty-six point six eight acres from AR one to R three. And it's on the map four seventy-six. It's parcel seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-eight. It's located on Old Augusta Road. My property is adjacent to this property. My daughter's is also. And she's in Germany at this time, but she's allowed me to speak for her. And I also have the property owners that are adjacent to this property that have allowed me to speak at this time. And our history runs very deep in the land that has been requested to be rezoned. At the end of the Civil War, this land was included in the Sherman's Field Order to allot forty acres and a mule to our freed families. I was, I, I would ask that our, would, would maintain the integrity of the property to honor our history. It says, with the discussion to maintain the integrity of the land, I would urge our county commissioners and our zoning board to consider a few of the following requests. One is an eight-foot privacy fence around the development. I would also ask that the eight-foot privacy fence to be built and maintained by the developers and a maintenance agreement to be in writing for the county, from the county to enforce this agreement. Number two, a forty-foot tree barrier along all sides that have been home, that, excuse me, that have homes bordering this property. Trees are important to the privacy and the wildlife for their protection. And number three, please consider freestanding homes that are not squashed together and with shared walls and have little patches of land. And it says, please allow me to explain my reasons for, for these above requests. My property was deeded to me by my father in the nineteen, in nineteen ninety. We have a pond with our property approximately a hundred yards from our home. Since the time we redeemed this property, people have driven on our land to the property, dumped trash in our pond, have, um, I, we had a couple to come and, and set up a campsite that were going to camp there for the weekend. This without permission. And we've had the four-wheelers to go and mud bog. And we had a Jeep that got stuck in there one time because they were bogging. We've had, uh, and they go in there and they fish, swimming in the pond. And they ride four-wheelers on our property and cut donuts on the food plots that we have and the feeding, and they, and they have gone and, um, feeding my pet, um, and, and petting my horses in the pasture without permission. Some of these are innocent acts, but in our present day of our legal system, we could be held responsible for the, for injuries for those trespassing on our property. So we also have farm equipment that would be harmful if climbed on. An example is hares and these, you know, other things to farm with. My chicken pen is fifty feet from our property line. We have hay that we store for my horses. We have, uh, equipment, storage buildings, as well as tools and animals that could adversely be affected or even damaged by people that don't belong around them. Not to mention the risk of theft on, to our personal items from, from wandering citizens. Townhome communities have property management commu-, companies that are often replaced by different property management companies. Townhomes are often lower priced than freestanding homes and, uh, that have nice sized yards. Townhome communities do not always have amenities such as examples are gym, pool, tennis court for recreation. These homes have limited access to property for, uh, for recreation, exercise, and entertainment purposes. These homes are squashed together with shared walls. With, with these, only access to the property is a, is a little patch of land to their townhomes. Again, I would like to thank, thank all the county commissioners and also the zoning board, you, and decisions to make to move forward. The land that I own is only mine for as long as I live. We take nothing with us when we die. It is our responsibility and is important to keep the faith of our forefathers preserving and maintaining the integra-, the integrity of our land as we move forward with the growth of our coun-, of our county. Thank you, and I have the signatures from the adjoining, um, property owners that also agree with what I said to, to please consider freestanding homes rather than townhomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Been a long day. How y'all doing?
Good, sir. How are you?
Uh, I guess I just have some question, kind of.
Can I get your name, sir?
I'm Shelton Lilly.
Shelton?
Lilly, L-I-L-Y, yes, sir. Uh, I guess I kinda have some questions. Uh, my first question is, I stay on one oh two High Point Drive? Yeah, I think I'm looking at the picture like on the back. Is that true? Is it coming out behind my house?
These across the road?
Right. So I got the letter. So my question is, how close is that to my house? Where is the entranceway to the development?
The entrance is going in Carone, Carone Drive.
The Old Augusta, whoa, that's not.
Off Old Augusta and.
Yes, is that coming out in my backyard?
No, it's on Old Augusta Road.
I mean, you said it was one entrance, right, ma'am?
Do you have that, do you have that, can you show him, do, Katie?
I mean, I got the letter. I had a hard time. I got the letter.
So you have to take a step back and look at that screen up over your head?
Right, there was one that had one oh two on it.
Okay, so how far is that from my house? I'm at one oh two High Point Drive.
I'm not sure where your house is.
Yeah, it was on there.
It should be right across the street.
Go back.
It should be right there across, 'cause I got the letter and I got the thing. Yeah, I'm, I'm like, I can't reach that high. I'd be the first house you come to when you turn on Chimney Road.
So can I, can I, can I ask what your, what your, what is your question?
My question is, sir, is that, how close is this rate to our house, my house?
Right.
Okay, number two, what type of homes is this? Low income, high income, middle income, et cetera? Number three, I've been there since two thousand and four. It was a dirt road. Road was cracked. All they had to worry about was how it was tearing up my yard. I keep up my house. You know, I take pride in my house. Now, we got these warehouses going in. You already took some of my land. My question is, how much traffic can that highway take on the two-lane highway? Now, you gonna put all these townhouses in here, there's more cars. There's more going on, activity along with the warehouses that's going up. We got trucks, you got everything coming through. So my question is, sir, how much more can Old Augusta Road take with traffic? I live right there on the corner, and I'm telling you, my family tell you all night long, all I hear is eighteen's coming through. Everybody gotta work, everybody gotta live, man. I'm not, not against you. But then I don't want drugs. I don't wanna look at trash. I don't want no low-scale income coming to my area. I mean, I'm just being honest. It was a nice neighborhood. It was peaceful. It was quiet. But we got a lot still going on. City grow. I respect that. I'm not gonna stay long. But my question is, with that entranceway coming close to my house, which I'm already close to the road, and be honest with you, I'm waiting for a truck to come through my house. 'Cause I'm right there. You can look. So with the entranceway, and how many houses you say, ma'am?
Hundred forty.
A hundred and forty, more cars, there's more people. What is the plans to do with that highway and my house that close to that road? How much more can we take? And we started putting more warehouses up along with the auto plant and so on. So my question is, since my house is sitting right there, close to that road, with that entranceway right there, I don't think that's right. I really don't. I understand we got to grow, but something got to be done. And I want to say again, how much more can we take on that road? Constantly twenty-four seven. You know, you like, you come to my house, stay one night and you'll see how it is that close to the road and the subdivision having one entrance, entranceway. That's, that's my question. Is how close is all this coming to my house? Real close. So the question is, if you living there, man, would you want that?
I've lived here for forty-six years.
No, 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 I'm asking that in my, in my house.
Mr. Lilly, I know.
Okay, I understand. I just want her to really understand.
I, I understand.
I don't really understand. I know how long.
It, it's personal. Thank you.
It's not personal, it's just, I wasn't logical.
It is. Yes, ma'am. Good evening.
My name is Crystal Barnard and I own the acre that is gonna be at, right behind them. And in front of us, there is an easement for the lec-, the power lines. And what I worry about is they're gonna be putting in community water or bringing in Rincon water, whatever, you know, for these. But I have a well and a septic tank. You know, how is that gonna affect my well? What's gonna happen when these people that are living there start exploring around? Because there's like four borrow pits when they paved Old Augusta that they took the dirt out of that are on the, where the power lines are here, is dirt there. We've already had, I don't know how many people out there that we've called the police on because they are camping and it's private property. And the police come out and they don't do anything. They just walk over there and say, oh, well, you're not supposed to be here, but okay. And come back and say, well, you know, they're not hurting anything, just leave them alone. Is that what's gonna continue to happen? You know, how does this affect our, um, the traffic patterns? It's, I'm a nurse and I work in Savannah and it takes me forty-five minutes to drive twenty miles because of twenty-one, and it's just gonna get worse. And I think y'all should have all thought about all of this before you did all this expansion. You know, is the, the road work?
So, Ms. Barnard, I mean, the, the traffic, that is a valid concern, um.
And the noise level?
The.
'Cause they are literally from here to that, not even that long, maybe that desk is the, from my deck.
The fact that it's on city water and sewer would have no effect on your well or your septic tank.
Okay.
It'll be a, you know, it's an enclosed system coming from the city of Rincon.
Okay.
If that's who, no, I'm sorry, coastal, coastal water, which is still self-contained.
Okay. And what, how will it affect our property value and our taxes?
I mean, we, we've seen no evidence that, that these type of developments have affected surrounding properties.
It's not gonna change the use on their property.
No, I mean, it, it, that's, that's great. It doesn't change your use or what you can, can't do, so.
No, but it puts people that close to me.
Yes, ma'am.
And I bought this, well, actually, my mother bought this when my father passed because my grandmother lived across the street. And we kept, kept it wooded around us for that purpose, for privacy.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barnard.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Uh, my name is Jimmy Scott. I am the property owner of four-seven-six, where, where am I? Four-seven-six dash seven-nine. And you'll see that, uh, borders the entirety of two sides of my property. Um, so we are concerned about a lot of the issues that are coming up here today. I want to second the comments of, uh, Ms. Johnson and her husband. Nice to meet you, sir. He's been by my house a couple times. We have, uh, well and septic, and I understand that that's not likely to be an issue. So I'll exclude those from my comments. Um, I'm gonna step back so I can see. I would like, um, more communication than the original letter that was sent to us. The greenery on the east-west line there, that borders my property. I don't know if you can see, yeah, you got a video there.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'd like more information about that. I understand you sent letters out to the property owners and we did receive one, not about.
The county, the county's required to notify every, everyone.
Um, we've misplaced that letter 'cause I wanted to review it for further comment here, but I can't find it. So it will turn up. My wife has probably turned it up by now. How can I address questions about that east-west line and the vegetation that's gonna be required on that side? Can I get mailed the particulars of the requirements that they're gonna have to build there? Um, how do I find that information?
The, okay, so assuming rezoning and sketch plan are approved by the board commissioners and assuming we go forward and land develop, um, an LDA or, um, land disturbance activity permit is issued and then site development or development plan permit is issued, they, we will certainly suggest that the twenty-foot vegetative buffer remain as is. It looks like it's pretty heavily wooded there. Uh, the, the, the requirement in the ordinance is that, you know, any trees that can be left in the buffer remain there. It's unlikely that a, that a developer would clearcut and then come back and plant. So the likelihood is, and certainly what we would recommend and expect, is that that twenty-foot buffer along, it's sort of the, the northern part of your property is what we're talking about, that east-west line, that we would expect that that twenty-foot buffer would be maintained. And so that when any timbering activity occurs, that the silt fencing would go up and that line of demarcation would be apparent.
Um, I got two property lines there. The one that's along the driveway, the pipe stem where the, where the letters one-two-two-zero are, that's a driveway. That's my greatest concern. Because it's the greatest exposure. And, uh, honestly, I, I don't know how we could tolerate to live there if there weren't a privacy fence along that side.
Well, the good news, I mean, for, for you is, I mean, by the sketch plan, there is a lake behind you and there's a lot of green space down that property line. And well, it's, it's a, it's a detention pond.
Miss drawing, you see where it says twenty-foot buffer horizontally right there? You see, yeah, sir. Where it says twenty, she's pointing at twenty-foot, at the twenty-foot buffer. That's the side I'm talking about. That's where my driveway is.
But you see.
Not the side where the lake is. It's the driveway.
But you see all the green space running down that property line?
If it's.
Can I interject something?
Yes, but I need you to, you're gonna have to speak into microphone if you can't be.
My name is Jeffrey Jonas, and we actually own the property that he's pointing at where that twenty-foot buffer is. This is not representing what's actually being done. Whoever spent nine months, whatever, trying to do this, if you look in there, you'll actually see the apartment buildings that are in their vegetation area, right? That twenty-foot buffer that's going east-west like he's talking about is actually in the backyard of those buildings. Because when you step behind our building, right, there's our setback, then there's his driveway. And then we get to the woods. This whole section right here is probably about half of what you see right here. So just based off of that, and we're talking about rezoning.
Yeah, I see that now. See how it goes in there?
The overlay?
Yeah.
I think it is. I think the whole overlay needs to shift.
Yeah.
It can't shift because now you're in the other people's driveway. In my driveway. No, actually, the twenty-foot buffers in, in front of my building right here.
Yeah, yeah, our driveway's back there.
So.
Our driveway's right there.
And I'll start back, let him finish.
Thank, thank you.
I keep, I keep peoples, people saying, oh, there's all this land. There's not. That whole front entrance right there is about half of what you're showing.
All right, sir. Did you, could you finish your comments, please, sir?
Oh, I forgot, honestly, I forgot where I left off. That side of the, where my driveway runs below that green, that green area right there is, uh, you know, when, when you're talking about a twenty-foot buffer and it looks, it looks big right there, you um, you know, when, when you're talking about a twenty-foot buffer and it looks, it looks big right there, you step out there and look at it, that's from me to you. Right there, that's, that's buildings there in my driveway here. How much green space can, uh, how much is tw- twenty-foot green space when you're talking about that's where the building is? That's not where their open space is on their property. That's where the actual backside of the building is.
Not in that plan, it's not.
Oh, no, you're right, it's further up.
Yes.
Yep.
It is hard to tell. There's a dotted line between the pro- east-west property line and the first little speck of brown going north, right in, right in the middle. Right here. What is this dotted line right here? That looks, oh, that looks like a sidewalk or something. So, we're gonna have people, if this is built where the
There's a walking tree.
Walking path, right.
It'll be all the way around.
This is gonna be twenty feet from my driveway, right there. Kids right there. Cars coming down my driveway with no visibility, possibly depending on what this green space is. Rather uncomfortable in many respects for access to my property. We're, you know, we're a long ways from kids walking up and walking around. And there's a swimming pool. Can you show more of my property, the south side? Is there something that shows that?
There's not a swimming pool.
I own a swimming pool.
And you own a swimming pool.
Yes, I own a swimming pool. So, um, where would it be right there? Oh, you can see the, you can see the buildings. If you look carefully, you can see in the buildings in the background. Right here is a huge swimming pool. What's that do with my liability? I mean, it's enclosed in a screen, a screen, a screened-in plate, uh, thing, but, you know, any teenager can put his hand right through that and they'll be in the pool. I don't know how to make this good for me in any, in any respect. How many children are gonna be in that subdivision? One per building, average?
There, there, there's no way to know.
There's no, there's no way to know, but wherever there's people, there's kids.
That's correct.
There's gonna be at least one adult in every one of those when it's fully occupied. There's gonna be likely, you know, a breeding couple like me and my wife and my kids um, in half of them. So, well, they're surrounded by ponds, so I guess my drowning risk is less than theirs. What am I, what am I gonna say about that? Uh, we don't, we don't get to decide that. This is the United States.
All right, so, so, um, sir, can
Yes, sir.
Can you wrap up your comments, please?
I guess I'm done.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, Pastor Delmon White, uh, ten twenty-one South Old Augusta Road. Good to see you, Michael. Been a long time. Um, I'm, I'm right down the road from all this, uh, and kinda bad situation I'm in because the people that's selling this, uh, trying to sell this property, that they're representing the they are family of my wife, but, uh, that doesn't change anything but my opinion about this situation. I think the whole, uh, let me put my name over here before I forget. The, the whole idea of putting in uh, another development down here on Old Augusta Road on the, on this, uh, south end where we already inundated with warehouses and all this other stuff that they say is coming, we just, well, get ready for and all that other stuff. I, I recently ran for county commission, unsuccessful, of course, but that's all right. That's my third time around and I may be back. But my point for getting up is that I heard a hundred and forty units. And I also think I heard that, that access is off Old Augusta Road. One access.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
One.
Yes, sir.
One access in, one, one way out. Hundred and forty units off of Old Augusta Road that I know all too well, that since we fought and they got it paved uh, several years ago, and I've been living down there for over forty years on, on, on Old Augusta. That road has become what, what I call a nightmare. Where it used to not be no problem. I, I understand, brother, what you mean. I, I remember when you moved in down there. It used to be quiet. Peaceful area when it was muddy and sandy. Once they got paved and, and they, county deemed it a truck route bypass for Rankin, it started happening. Then Ford Howard came in and it really was on. And now it's, it's, it's chaotic. Get out of my driveway to go south uh, in the mornings from, anyway, from five-thirty to maybe eight-thirty or so, it's, it's just utterly almost impossible. Just sit there and wait fifteen minutes or more to get out of my driveway to go, go south. And we got school buses and all that in there. My problem with this is, and I'll make it short, no need to run a long time, is that a hundred and forty units with one way in and one way out is a death trap. It's a death trap regardless of where, you know, it's right across the roof from your house. If, if they're going in their carry suite, they're going in that area in their carry suite property and they're somewhere in that area and they're the forks.
No, it's the, um, there's the easement and then Kerry's properties to the right.
Before you get to the forks. Before you get to Forks apartment.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, before you get to Forks apartment. Uh, but I'm trying to make point for, for Brother Lilly over there is that if they're going in anywhere close to the Kerry suites and his, they'll be almost in front of his house where the access road would be.
That, that is correct.
All right, the point is, it's, it's just, you don't have a D, if they don't put a D cell lane in for, for, for traffic, they're coming in, they come from, from the north, coming south, put a D cell in for them to turn in there, they don't have a, 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 a pass, a lane where they could pass over to the right of the person coming from the south, going north, for them to go in that subdivision. It's a, it's a death trap. Accident waiting to happen. So, I mean, uh, you, you all got a lot on you right here and, uh, you know, my heart goes out to you, but, you know, you really need to think hard and long before you even consider passing this uh, because it, it needs more than one way in and one way out. That's one thing. And then a whole lot of other things when you get ready for the plan, sketch plan, all that stuff, stuff, you have to make sure they get with, with DOT or, or whoever is responsible and try to get some kind of, uh, safer way to get in and out of that place. But to be one way in and one way out is, it definitely don't need to happen, not with a hundred and forty units. That's a lot of people putting, being, lives being put at risk. Having major emergency, in no way in the world everybody can get out of there if it's fully occupied before, you know, something happens. Thank you very much for your time. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Good evening. My name's Robert Fields. I live at three, three ninety-eight Caroney Drive. That's this parcel right here. I just right here?
Yes, sir.
I have concern about if you bring in this kind of project, they're gonna have to build their land up. What's it gonna do to me? Are you gonna turn me into a swamp? I've been here, I haven't been here as long as a lot of these, it's already spoken. I've been here for twenty-two years and, um, when I first moved there, speed limit on that highway out there was forty-five miles an hour. They paved the other end of Old Augusta Road, they presented up to fifty-five, which means sixty-five, as we all know. They got all these logistics they bring, bringing in, like y'all have already mentioned, you got the tractor trailers, they haven't even started yet compared to what they are now. They fixing to get really bad. I, I recommend the thing stay at R one. They can still develop it. They can put, it would be much safer to put a few houses in there than to put a hundred and forty people trying to come out on that thing, cause it's not even, it's not even where it's gonna be yet. There's a, to the north, there's a curve and it's not just a curve, but it comes from downhill. You don't see them coming when we coming out now. When we're coming out now, you don't see anything and you pull out, they're already on your behind. If you, if you have a hundred and forty homes and they're coming out from one driveway, we're asking for trouble. And that's, that's my thing.
Thank you, Mr. Fields.
I'm Jeffrey Jonas. We own the apartments, I'm co-owner in the apartments that are right below where the entrance is gonna be. Talking specifically about zoning, I have my concerns about the watershed off of this place. They're gonna dig those two retention ponds, which we know what retention ponds mean around here. They hold water and then they just flood over when they, they get done. Your comment earlier, you said that you don't care for having these big multifamily projects, townhomes in these rural type areas. This is off the side of the road. That road was supposed to have been a four-lane bypass that went, took all the truck traffic off of, out of through Rankin. They took the county taxpayers' money and they put that two-lane road in there and developed it for all these warehouses. But they didn't follow through on the other two lanes and carrying it all the way out to Ebenezer like the original plans, okay? So, whatever happened to that? Now we're behind the eight ball and we're letting all this development go in there, all these warehouses go in there. Okay, so trying to figure out a way, and I'm sticking to the, the part about just zoning and why this is a bad idea for this particular area. We need to be looking more at housing, right, as opposed to the actual, these townhomes. The problem is, is, and this is something I've heard on every single one of these cases, is the developers have said, yes, we'll take care of that. We'll make sure the lights are right. We'll make sure that this road is here, this is here. Well, I can tell you, I gave my property to Effingham County to pave Marlowe Road. And I sat right in the meeting. There was not supposed to be any trucks on that road. You go down there, look, nobody says anything to them. You got semis, dump trucks. The county doesn't enforce the stuff that is said right here, okay? Once it leaves here, they do whatever they want, okay? The neighborhood right across the street, my neighborhood, they had a gate, or should I say a construction entrance that was supposed to have been gated after the last house was sold. Nobody ever enforced that. It's the same thing with that warehouse that they're doing over on eighty. Once that happens, it's done. These people don't go back and ask permission to do anything. That gate, or should I say construction entrance, was never blocked off. There were supposed to be no driveways off of Lee Village and, uh, Victoria Oaks, exiting out of those yards onto Marlowe Road. And you go over and you look, the county allows them to put these driveways coming out there, okay? So, once you turn this thing on, it's done. The other one was, we had permission from the county, and this is talking about density in these apartments, to have twelve units put on two acres of land. When we went to go build that third unit, the county come back and goes, nah, we're gonna stop you at the two units, so you're gonna, only gonna let you do four or eight units. Eight residences. So, once again, back then, they were at least thinking about density and trying to spread it out. So, that's the reason I'm against that. And if you want to talk about the map, that map should not even be used as a representation of what they're asking you to do or approve it for, for a multifamily like that. Because you can see where I showed you before.
Yes, you're correct. It is, it is definitely off. There's, there's, there's no arguing that.
There is no way they're gonna get all that green area. And if they're gonna put neighborhoods like this in, they need to basically say, look, we're gonna put an eight-foot fence around it. Because the guy that lives behind us, he's right, he's got a pool. And I can tell you that the property I've got over there off of Marlowe Road, everybody thinks that because I've got land, it's okay for them to go explore it. And that's exactly what happens here. Okay, so we'll move on from the zoning part.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas.
My name is Kim Hooker. Sorry, I got a cold. Um, I live at eleven sixty-five and also have eleven ninety-nine Chimney Road. So, they're coming right on the backside of my eleven ninety-nine property. And from the looks of it, it's gonna be a great big pond there. I already have the church that's coming up right there at the corner of Chimney and Old Augusta. He left a twenty-foot tree barrier, which is nothing. Most of the twenty-foot doesn't even have trees in it, so twenty-foot is nothing. And you're talking about coming in all around these residential homes. You, I've been in the county since two thousand, been over here for six years. You buy, you come to Effingham for the property, you know, just to have your nice family homes and have your few little acres. And now with the warehouses, they come up so fast. I rode down Chimney the other day and another huge warehouse on Chimney Road that you can see from Chimney. So, we're, we're losing all our privacy. There's no more little residential's, it's, it's gonna look like Benton Boulevard in Poole. Every time you put an apartment, two vehicles per apartment, you got a hundred and forty units, so two eighty to three hundred cars, like they said, coming in and out of a one-way area right there by me, and then you're looking at close to five hundred people back there with no boundaries, at least, you know, by the time you get at least three people in an apartment. And you know they're gonna have more than that. So, I'm against the R three. I'm totally against it. I would much rather see homes. I realize that people are gonna develop and they wanna expand, but we're losing our small piece of property and privacy. We have deers come in our yard. We have foxes come in our yard. Everything's getting cleared out. There will be nothing anymore. They're pushing the wildlife, and I know y'all don't care. We have owls, we have owls.
Ms. Hooker, please address the board.
I'm sorry, we have owls that fly in our yard. I mean, we're just losing the woodlands that we have and hundred-year-old trees. I mean, I, I, if, if they're gonna come back there with anything, I'd rather it be R one, I would still rather there be a forty-foot tree barrier, cause you can go right over there right now and look at where the church just cleared out crazy without even getting any permits. And their twenty-foot is nothing, so a forty-foot tree barrier, a fence barrier, and then you got all these ponds. I have two-year-old grandson on my property, a great-grandson coming, my neighbor's got a granddaughter. We're all right here by this water areas that they're gonna be putting up. And it's, it's just not safe. But just the amount, the volume of people right there, we're just totally losing everything. We have nothing anymore. The whole reason, I mean, it makes you just wanna move further out or go to the next county. So, I'm, I'm not in favor.
Thank you, Ms. Hooker. Is there any else, one else that can add? Yes, sir. You're good.
She's right about the twenty-foot, you, that's only two pine trees deep. If you grow two pine trees, you can see through them. You come, you can throw a, a dump truck through them. You, it's no, that's not a big enough opening. That's not a big enough buffer. And, uh, we've had my wife put it very well a while ago, but we've had so many ups and downs with, with people. And just what, we just have few people around us right now. We, we don't have people, I don't have a problem with Ridgecrest. There are subdivisions over there and it, good people. As far as I know, most of them, I'd have no trouble with them. But some of the lesser areas around there, we've got motorcycles running through our food, food plots, four-wheelers dumping stuff in our ponds, swimming in our ponds, fishing in our ponds, cussing me out because I try to get them out of my pond. And, and, and I'm only saying this because it's just gonna be that many more people coming in. It's not gonna be uh, the ones that's there now, they know better, you know, but we gotta start over again if we start out with a hundred and forty new families or how many ever families. They get, they're gonna come. I'm, right now, the, uh, what's happened in the, in the past is survey lines of seventy-five, a hundred years old are out there. Couple of the people that we've just talked tonight, if some of the survey lines are, are buttoned, they're their line. I mean, right up in their yards. I mean, just like the, the the deal with this gentleman back here with the apartments. Those lines, they were put in so far, long ago and they weren't so established that well that people built real close to them, you know, thinking they were doing the right thing. And right now, some of them are only just far away from the property lines. Her line and their line is like, you know, would be this far. You can, it's, it's, it's not established, not well at all. And I have no problem with a R one. Over the years, we've, we considered trying to buy all that property, but it was such a hassle trying to get it that we, we didn't do it because we figured, well, whoever buys it, since there were three owners, that they would go R one or something to that nature. It's, this didn't happen and they, they beat us to the punch and not necessarily beat the punch, but we just... This, this didn't happen and they, they beat us to the punch and not necessarily beat the punch, but we just didn't see it needing to happen that way. But we have, everything I own right now would be visible for about three hundred feet on their property line. And in fact, if we don't have some kind of a buffer, and I don't, twenty feet's nothing. Maybe a forty-foot, what the, an eight-foot fence that, to be repaired and maintained at their expense, that might help. It's not gonna, that's not gonna be the cure. The corner of my pond and the corner of the property with Robbie and their land is, is close as you to my pond, their corner is. And I have a little road right between it, but that's how close it is. But again, that's about the hundred-year-old survey and it's just an issue. And I'm totally not in favor of the multifamily. If it was single family, that would be great, no problem at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jonas. Is there anything else to be added?
I did wanna add one thing, um, Old Augusta is a truck route, um, that's what it's intended for, it's also proposed to three lane, I'm pretty sure, I don't know if that's.
I think it's proposed four lane.
Or is it four lane? Okay, so there, it is proposed to be four lane, so, um, when you look around this property and everything, the apartments to the left, the RV park to the right, um, you do have two subdivisions across Old Augusta Road. Um, I feel like this is perfect, I mean, we do need some type of townhomes on that side of the county in my opinion, we do have single family around there. Um, a lot of people come into this community, they don't want big yards, um, there's a lid for every pot. I understand y'all's concerns, I've lived here myself for forty-six years on the same piece of property on Highway twenty-one. Um, I now see the red light of Old Augusta Road from my backyard, growth is inevitable. Um, we have a great community, people come here, I'm sorry. I mean, people come here, we have a great community, like, they want, I get it. Um, I'm also in real estate, I hear it every day. There's a lot of older people that come to our community, they don't want yards to maintain. Um, I sold in Springfield where the county requires a tree in the front yard. These people came in, they did not want trees, like even the one the county required, they did not want us to put it in the yard, I'm like, you got to have it. So, I mean, I understand everybody's concerns, I get it, but again, there's a need for several different types of communities um, in our area. And I do feel like that this project and where it's proposed fits with what's around it.
So, obviously you heard a lot about buffers and fencing, I mean, do you have anything?
Well, we do have the twenty-foot buffer that's proposed, I don't know why it's missing some of the vegetation on the, that will definitely be addressed.
If I can, I'll ask a question.
I had a thirty-foot buffer next to me. I can't stop people coming in your yard.
So, anyway, it's, um, Corey McLaughlin.
Well, I, I just, and again, we'll get, we'll get to it on the, the next item, but looking at the site plan and hearing some of the concerns of the neighbors, it did look like the lots were pretty deep on the townhomes and the rear yards and it, it could.
That's the new requirement, right? The, would that be you, Katie's owning the new requirement for the lot size for the townhomes?
There's no specific lot size, what it is, is that you're restricted to forty percent coverage of the lot and so based on whatever dwelling unit size, you have to then extrapolate out and, and create a lot that would accommodate that, giving space for green space, driveway, et cetera.
So it is a lot of space.
Well, I guess I'm just, it's, it's something that could be considered, um, it does look like there's, without even affecting the yield of the site plan, a bigger buffer could be preserved, whether it's preserved area on the lots and, um, if it is a buffer, it doesn't need to, the property lines don't need to go through the buffer to the adjacent property line like this sketch shows either. It'll be owned by those property owners and that buffer will go away because they'll own the property even if it says as a buffer, but I was just curious if there's a way to accommodate it and not really affect your site plan, it seems like it would be a, a win. I can, I'll speak for my opinion on the access, I mean, this, I know the number of units is, when you're used to it being three lots, it's a significant number, but it's not of a number that one entryway doesn't work with many, many communities. Um, I mean, even the international fire code, the limit's two hundred for a secondary entrance and it's not a full en- entrance, so this is below that number even, so.
One entrance on the road the size of Old Augusta Road? Two lanes both ways maybe?
It's gonna be a four-lane, right?
I, I'm, I'm sorry, but we're gonna, we're gonna have to, uh, you know, we're.
If it were in place, it wouldn't be such a big deal, but it's not.
So, Ms., uh, Ms. Hurst, I mean, you heard a lot of, um, comments about a privacy fence, I mean, do you have any thoughts on that?
I feel like the buffer is sufficient, I don't feel like that should be required to put in a privacy fence, um, I don't think I've ever seen any developer do that.
So, um, alright, we're, uh, in a closed public comment at this time. Discussion from the board.
Aren't we confident we know the boundary?
Sir?
Aren't we confident we know the boundary? Like, did we get a, was there anything, I was looking through just what was submitted, I just wanted to make sure we understood, like, again, because the site plan was included and it does look like there's a discrepancy there on that piece.
There's definitely a discrepancy on the sketch plan, I mean, you know, um, the first one is, question is the rezoning. Resoning from R one to, to R three, um, is, is rezoning any, is, is that not the time to add any stipulations? Or are those stipulations added at sketch plan?
You can do either, we generally would prefer to take care of any conditions in the rezoning, but you can certainly add them for sketch plan and actually, given that the sketch plan and the open space is contingent on the, you know, the boundary shown here, and those boundaries clearly are less because that house is not supposed to be included, then it might be better to delay this, table this, postpone this until we get a revised sketch plan showing the actual property boundaries and a recalculation of both lot sizes and the open space to ensure that the sketch plan is meeting requirements. The rezoning is one thing, but the sketch plan, really it's our, it's, it's, it's our, you know, going forward, that's what the, our review engineers will look at, um, along with the site development plan, so it, it's better that it's accurate to start. Or attach conditions to it if you, if you prefer to handle it tonight.
Thank you, Teresa.
Is there any discussion?
I mean, I, I feel the, um, once again, I mean, I, I feel the pain of the surrounding neighbors, um, it's a truck route, um, whether I like the R three zoning is not for me to decide. I mean, it's the rules put forth by our, our related officials, um, so, you know, I, I, I don't, I don't, I don't have the answer.
I think the use, given some maybe additional concessions beyond just what the base minimum standard of the, or, uh, the, the zoning standard is, um, is a appropriate use out there, and I understand that there's be folks that disagree with that, but, um.
I agree, I think there needs to be a privacy fence, I, I don't disagree with that in, in places, definitely. Because of the near proximity of some of the adjacent property owners.
Alan, you have anything to say?
No, I agree, I think where, where they border these families and the houses are so close, I'd feel a lot better if it was a privacy fence there.
Alright, so may I make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning with the following additional conditions beyond what's shown on the site plan. A privacy fence be added to, within the buffer. And that the buffer is forty feet of preserved vegetation, whether that's twenty feet in a common buffer area and twenty feet on the lots or twenty feet, or forty feet of total common buffer area, I, I wouldn't care either way, but the forty feet of preserved tree area there. And if there's areas that don't have vegetation, that it's at a staff level to, to review that and make sure there's adequate vegetation provided back during the site development plan. That was a long motion, I apologize.
Everyone understand that, any discussion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, Alan's zipper seconds, it all is in favor. Any opposed? Motion carries three to one. Once again, this is a recommendation to the county commissioners, which is on April the fourth. Item thirteen is a sketch plan for the Carson Company Unlimited LLC as agent for Cynthia Roberts. ETAO requests approval of sketch plan for Baker Hill located on Old Augusta Road, Carone Drive is on R one, proposed zoning R three, fifth district. Ms. Conkendon, I mean, I believe we've discussed this enough.
I, I, I feel the need to interject here that the county attorney has stated on numerous occasions that the county cannot require a privacy fence if it's not in our ordinance and it's not in our ordinance. We've chosen not to include that in our ordinance, so you can certainly add that condition, it probably will be discussed at the board meeting, but, you know, point taken, absolutely point taken, but the county attorney has repeatedly said that's not something we can require. So that's why the staff, staff never add that as a condition.
So how about the sketch?
The sketch plan, a, a, at this point, uh, with the concern about the boundary line discrepancy, you, you may want to consider tabling or, or requiring a revised sketch plan be submitted before the board meeting.
I would just, I mean, my opinion is denied because it's, it move it along with the rezoning. Because it's not, it's not accurate.
Yeah, I mean, there's no time limitation, they can resubmit a correct sketch plan, so there's no real, it just needs to be a corrected sketch plan.
So, um, this sketch plan is not a public hearing, um, so, I call for a motion.
I make a motion to deny as presented.
Motion for denial, is there a second? Second, all is in favor. Any opposed, motion carried by all. Meeting adjourned.